So we'll be providing a significant amount of information tonight. Our goal is to pause after each presenter to respond to any pressing questions. However, some questions may be best answered by a following presenter. So just know that we may defer you until the next presenter depending on what the question is. And then, of course, there will be time at the end of the presentations for any questions that you may have. But as always, if you feel like you need to interrupt, we will roll with that. Before I introduce my fellow presenters, I'll provide some context for why we are here, even providing this presentation. So the city of Hillsborough, Hills City Manager's Office, the Police Department, Washington County, and Project Homeless Connect have all heard an increase in community concerns regarding the intersecting topics of camping debris, open air drug use, and vandalism. While these concerns may be symptoms of unsheltered homelessness and behavioral health challenges, we do just want to clarify that people who are experiencing houselessness or behavioral health challenges are not necessarily individuals who are committing crimes. So we do just want to kind of state that upfront. One does not necessarily lead to the other. Each of the organizations presenting tonight recognize the need to address these issues, though, and each plays a different role in addressing these concerns. So, for instance, the city is not a service provider, as we do not operate access centers or shelters, and we do not receive a dedicated source of funding to address these complex issues. We recognize that a multi-pronged approach is necessary, and we come together with our community partners to share information and to address these issues. I'll note that tomorrow, the city will begin pushing out this recording of this work session to community members to make sure that they have that available along with contact information so that staff can field questions, staff being Keomi and others as applicable. So, next slide, please. So presenting with me tonight from the city's manager, City Manager's Office is Keomi Arbuckle here, our Community Services Program Coordinator, who you heard praises allotted upon her. From the city's Police Department, Sergeant Aaron McCarver, our Community Outreach Sergeant and Public Information Officer. From Washington County, Marnie Kyle, who you heard from earlier, is the Assistant County Administrator, one of the Assistant County Administrators. Her portfolio actually includes the Housing Department and Health and Human Services Department, which is relevant for this portion of the presentation. And then also, we have community partners today. Unfortunately, 4D Recovery was not able to join us for this presentation, but Kim Marshall, the Executive Director of Project Homeless Connect, is here to help support us. So I want to say thank you to all of our presenters for hanging in there for a long evening and for contributing to this dialogue with our city council. So thank you for that. Next, our work session goals. So our goals for tonight are provide information regarding the scope and impacts of unsheltered homelessness and behavioral health, to review current homelessness initiatives, mental health support services, addiction treatment options, and support for neighboring residents and businesses, and to demonstrate how community work partners are working to reduce homelessness, provide behavioral health support, and address impacts. And here's the next one. That's important. So to share the scope of these issues and the work being conducted to address them, we will be providing you with a lot of information. I said that earlier, and Robbie mentioned that. This is hopefully not too long, just long enough to provide the necessary information. But what we won't be able to do tonight is solve homelessness or behavioral health challenges. We will not be able to accomplish that tonight because homelessness and behavioral health challenges are complex, they are evolving, and they are persistent human issues. Given that, much like we asked for an equity work, we ask that you both expect and accept non-closure because we will not be able to solve all of this this evening. But we do want to provide you with information about what is happening on the ground right now. Are there any questions before I hand it off to Keomi? Okay, you're up, Keomi.
Okay, for the record, my name is Keomi Arbuckle, Community Services Program Coordinator. So thank you, Simone. Tonight, we'll talk about the intersection concerns homelessness, behavioral health, and public safety. Access to essential support services is crucial for the safety and well-being of both housed and unhoused individuals. Having limited behavioral health services, including mental health and addiction services, creates barriers for vulnerable populations in the community. And rising overdoses, public drug use, and the mental health crisis poses significant concerns for not just the unhoused community and individuals that are experiencing homelessness, but the greater community and the community as a whole. It puts a large strain on our emergency services, including PD especially, and that's something that we'll talk about going forward. And so in the next couple of slides, I will give some data about homelessness and behavioral health. So before I dive into this, I kind of just want to name that homelessness right now feels very, very personal to us as individuals, to us as a community, to service providers, to PD, to you as council members. And so I really want to zoom out a bit and look at this from a larger perspective and kind of just give ourselves a tiny break for just half a second and just, as we move forward, think about, we are not the only people who are struggling with these issues right now. So in the United States, in 2023, 20 out of every 10,000 people were experiencing homelessness, which is a 12% increase from 2022. In Oregon, we saw a 63% increase in unsheltered homelessness over the last six years. In 2023, 64.6% of people experiencing homelessness in Oregon were living unsheltered on a single night. And I want to name that, I know in the SHS Annual Report, it was stated that there was a decrease, but I do want to acknowledge that there's no Hillsborough-specific data. And so we don't know where specifically in the county it was increased or decreased. And that's something that we'll be working on going forward is having that data so we know what points and what areas we need to be working on. We also want to illustrate that our service providers and law enforcement teams, this is what they're seeing. So when they hear that there's a decrease, that might not be what they're seeing every single day. And so it's not to say, you know, they're not correct, but just to say, this is what they're seeing. And we want to acknowledge what community members are seeing and what our service providers are seeing. And then Washington County also mentioned that they're what, that the rent is super high in Washco. So that's just something to name and just to put in the back of our heads and remember. I am a, oh, I changed it on here, but not on here. That's not helpful. Okay, so I'm a very visual person. This is what shelter access looked like in 2023. As you can see, it's not a lot, and there's a lot of little red humans, which says a lot. We've got a lot of work to do in Oregon as a whole and in Hillsborough, so sit with that.
I have a quick question. What's a fair rent?
Excuse me?
What would be a fair rent?
I cannot answer that question.
Hi, Marnie Kyle, Washington County. It's Simone introduced me. What we talk about is a fair rent would be 30% or less of your income, so of the household income or individual's income. So that's what we think about as fair rent or a living rent. It's not a number, but...
And that's for the people who are housed, the blue on here. I know it's not the same presentation, but...
The blue on here are the year-round shelter beds that are present, but not necessarily housed. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So we'll go on to behavioral health now and break it down a bit from a national level. Nationwide, 23.1% of all U.S. adults were reported to have a mental illness, which is a large number. 20 to 25% of people without housing have a mental illness. And in Oregon, we have the fourth-highest unmet need for mental health treatment in the country and a huge shortage of mental health workers, which is not special for Oregon. There's a huge shortage of mental health workers everywhere currently. Did you have a question? Okay. Go on. 17.3% of all people aged 12 or older had a substance use disorder in the past year. And about 1/3 of people without housing have substance abuse problems. In the state of Oregon, there was an estimated 49% gap in needed substance use disorder services in 2022. And more than half of surveyed service providers reported it was just a lack of capacity. They just didn't have the space that they needed to treat the individuals that needed the help. And in Washington County, there's an overall service gap of 75%, and 39.6% of surveyed substance abuse providers don't actually provide services to individuals that are experiencing houselessness. The last thing we have about behavioral health and homelessness is that these conditions are connected, exacerbate, and prolong housing instability and can interfere with successful transition into housing. So, for example, if you have a behavioral health condition and you're also experiencing homelessness, it may be harder to keep a consistent job or maybe continue to pay your rent on time or even navigate a complex housing system. And structural and social barriers like insurance, transportation, discrimination make it harder for people to receive treatment as well. Same goes for the first thing. It's just hard to stay on top of really anything when you have more than one thing that's in the way of you even getting up in the morning and being able to go about your day. Is there a question? Okay. I'd like to share the city's role in addressing these interconnected issues. There's a couple of things, a lot of things that have been done in the past and that are going to be done now and in the future. We collaborate on both short and long-term solutions like the Safe Rest Pods, Year-Round Shelter Project that we mentioned previously, the outdoor cleanup through supportive employment, which we partner with City of Rose's Downtown Hillsborough Downtown Partnership and Open Door Housing Works, which is incredible and amazing. And then my role as a Community Services Coordinator, I work a lot with our communications team to make sure that the information that we do have is out there and accessible for anybody in the community. And so that's something that we are really working on going forward, just making sure that the information that we have to offer, it's easy to find, easy to see, easy to get to. It shouldn't be hard to get to the resource that you need. And camping rules, the community engagement and the creation of the rules in general, that there was a ton of work put into that prior to me getting here. And I know that there's going to be work to be done in the future. So got one more slide with some things that we're doing, and we want to name that we support local service providers like Project Homeless Connect and Home Plate Youth Services. While we support these essential services, we do want to make it clear that these are services that the city does not provide. So we really need to rely on these service providers to do the work on the ground and work with these communities. And then public safety, first responders, and law enforcement, including HPD's Community Impact Team, are extremely important to the work that we do in addressing these interconnected issues. With that, I will pause, but coming up will be Hillsborough Police Department touching on some of the work they do, what they've seen, and some stats. So if you have questions for that, we'll ask that you hold until...
Thank you. Any questions?
And what are, thank you for the slides of the presentation. What are the key avenues of communication for people seeking shelter? What are the avenues they're taking there as most?
So I would say a phone call to the number either 211 or the Community Connect Line. That is usually the quickest way to get services or get connected to a human. Other than that, it would be directly walking to like a Project Homeless Connect Access Center and getting connected with somebody there. I know that Sergeant Aaron and his team, they make connections as well while they're outside in the community. And so, but I would say a phone call would be the number-one way right now. And I know that there's an app or something, but I could be making that up, so don't quote me on that.
I have a question. So do you have a recommendation that the city should do something to support homeless youth?
To support homeless youth specifically?
Yeah.
I wouldn't say I have a specific recommendation. I also don't know which ways, what other ways we support other than community services grants.
I would add, too, I think, you know, we do have a great relationship with Home Plate Youth Services, so we do fund an outreach worker or partial outreach worker. And if the council members, about three years ago, we contributed $250,000 to the new Home Plate Shelter that's in Beaverton, right? Because we know this is a regional problem. So it's not a specific answer, councilor, I don't care, but we do try to find ways to support specific organizations like Home Plate that specifically work with youth.
And didn't we do the three-year Community Services Grant with them?
That's correct. They were one of the recipients of that as well.
Someone on Home Plate's board. And so if there are things that we could be doing in this city to support homeless youth, then I'd like to have conversation about that.
Thank you for the question. Do we have any other questions before we move to Police Department? All righty.
Is this thing on? Good. Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. My name is Aaron McCarver. I'm a sergeant with the Police Department, currently overseeing community outreach, which entails a few different teams. It's our Community Impact Team, our Bicycle Team, and also Code Compliance. So I'm just here to talk about a few things that we're seeing. There's a lot of stats. I apologize. It's a stat-heavy presentation, but I think it's important. So to talk specifically about these teams, our Community Impact Team is made up of two sworn officers. Our Bicycle Team is also made up of two full-time sworn officers. They essentially perform the same function, and that's kind of morphed over time, but that's really what we have found to be the most effective. We focus most of our time and attention on the downtown core, the west side of Hillsborough, because that's where we see the most challenges related to the topic at hand. Code Compliance does play a role and more of a supportive role, but in terms of a lot of the outreach and enforcement, that's primarily Community Impact Team and the Bike Team. So we operate a little bit differently than, say, a typical patrol officer in that we focus quite a bit on referrals to community services as well as enforcement. So we have excellent partnerships with Project Homeless Connect, 4D Recovery, Open Door, Home Plate, Safe Place for Youth, and other service providers as well. We make direct referrals to them all the time. And so we, our approach is really to collaborate with the service providers while also enforcing the laws and ordinances of the city. So some things that we see as a challenge that Hillsborough, that are unique to Hillsborough that maybe some of the other jurisdictions in Washington County don't see is just being the county seat. So the fact that the jail here has a pretty significant impact on this because anybody arrested and taken to jail ends up in Hillsborough. And when they're released, if they don't have a place to go, sometimes they stay here. In terms, I'm going to kind of skip ahead to jail capacity. This has been improving in recent months, but for several years, jail capacity was significantly diminished, and either folks couldn't be brought to jail at all or they were being forced released at incredible numbers just because of their staffing issues, which has an impact. Because if folks are being brought to the jail and then forced released, some people stay, some people move on depending on their housing status. Another challenge we have, well, to continue with the county seat, the courthouse is here, obviously. Probation and parole is here, several Washington County services are here. So these challenges are unique to Hillsborough that other jurisdictions don't necessarily face. Although other jurisdictions do have service providers, I list that on here because that is another draw to the city of Hillsborough is service providers in the area. And then the MAX line. Frankly, I've seen this thousands of times from personal experience. The MAX brings people from out of town, and sometimes they end up here whether they, especially in the winter months when it's cold and wet outside and unsheltered folks need a place to stay dry and warm, they'll ride the MAX and oftentimes end up in Hillsborough. They're falling asleep on the train, they can't get back to Portland or wherever they primarily reside, and some end up staying here. So those are just some of the challenges that I find are unique to Hillsborough. So this is some stats on camp calls. So every police officer activity is categorized into a call type, and we have probably 75 different call types that we use with our computer-aided dispatch. The camp call type is new as of September 2023. It was actually the Hillsborough Police Department, my predecessor, who really pushed for this camp type because we were, he was trying to more effectively track the calls for service for camps and homelessness. So traditionally, what had been done was you would have an unwanted or a suspicious person or any number of other call types that really could be categorized as a camp call. So that was changed in September of 2023, that call type began. And these are some of the statistics on other jurisdictions compared to Hillsborough on how often those call types are used. So these are calls for service that are specifically related to camps, both self-initiated by officers and called in by community members. I can speculate on why there's a significant disparity, but it would be just speculation at this point. But obviously, Hillsborough uses this call type far more often than any other jurisdiction by a long shot.
So I am more than happy to hear your speculation. Because, you know, I, you know, I know the populations, and I know how we compare population-wise. I probably don't know as well how we compare population of those experiencing homelessness. But none of, none of what I know fits into this, into this bar graph conveniently. So I will take your speculation with a huge grain of salt.
Sure.
Okay?
So, yeah, so we could actually probably go back to a previous slide. I mean, some of the challenges that Hillsborough has that other jurisdictions don't have, some of these affect that number, no question. I can't tell you exactly where everything falls in that line, but those definitely have an impact on the, on the numbers. And also, I think it's just our approach. So we are proactive with, you know, providing referrals and enforcing camping ordinances. So my team in particular is very proactive in that. Most of the calls, if you want to, if you would mind moving forward, most of those calls, and I apologize, I don't have the exact breakdown, but most of those calls are self-initiated calls. So instead of a community member calling about a camp, most of those are going to be self-initiated. So specifically, the Community Impact Team and the Bike Team primarily are self-initiating those calls.
One of the other things, if we can go back one slide to the challenges, because when I bring up the challenges of being the county seat, what I always hear is, oh, but because you're the county seat, you have, you know, more services. You have, you know, you have county buildings right there, you have county programs right there, you have county service providers right there. We don't because we aren't the county seat. We are removed from the county seat. We don't have, you know, transportation, you know, direct, whether it's on MAX or the bus or whatever it might be. So I appreciate hearing this because it confirms some of what I believe, and I'm always happy to have my own beliefs confirmed. So anyway, thank you.
Sure.
I think, I think...
Jail capacity. So are you, is that suggesting that there are people who aren't in jail because jail capacity? And that's, is that in relation to being homeless?
Well, the relationship that we see is if somebody is arrested, say, in Beaverton, they're houseless and they're arrested in Beaverton, they're brought to the Washington County Jail, and they're released, then sometimes they'll go back to Beaverton, sometimes they stay in Hillsborough. It's just, is the relationship that we see there.
Maybe you can explain a little bit more about what jail capacity is, then?
Yeah, so I specifically really refer to forced release. So when jail capacity is at a certain number, they force release folks instead of them being in for whatever designated amount of time they're supposed to be in for, they get forced released and sometimes in large numbers depending on their staffing. And so that, that can be a huge influx of people in a short period of time.
Does that mean they may or may not be homeless?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
And following up on that jail capacity, we, as the council, heard from the sheriff about the challenges, especially through COVID, with respect to, and then he also alluded to the fact that a greater share of the population that was in jail had either substance abuse issues or mental health issues. And so that seems to, seems to me that that would correspond to the number of people that are really in need of mental health services or substance abuse services or whatever, being in our community and not having the services either at, either at the jail or at other places that are servicing that population. So, yeah.
But around capacity, correct me if I'm wrong, Sergeant, there are five pods at the jail and only three are open? And so there's two pods that are completely closed due to lack of staffing? Is that correct? I've heard something around that.
Yeah, I can't speak to exactly what the situation is currently. They have made significant improvements in capacity over the last few weeks to a month or so.
I heard they contracted with Yamhill County, and they're sending adults in custody to Yamhill to free up space in this particular jail.
And that's possible. I can't, I can't speak to that. I'm not, unfortunately, I'm not quite that familiar with jail operations, but I know that has been discussed related to organized retail theft. I know that they've, they've discussed contracting with Yamhill County. I don't know if they're doing that on a regular basis or if that's specific to a grant that the DA's office received for organized retail theft.
Yeah, I had a question about this slide in particular. A question? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you. You talked about why this could be, because these are self-initiated calls. I'm also wondering, you said that this started in September of 2023, and it was started by Hillsborough. Is there some bias just because of the fact that we were the ones who started doing this and therefore we are more likely to use it?
That's entirely possible.
Great.
Yes, absolutely. So this is just a map. It's not actually a heat map. I think I made a mistake there. This is, this is actually just a map of where we're seeing calls for service related to camping in particular. Each one of these little diamonds represents at least one camp call over this time period from September 23 to date. Some of them represent many, many camp calls. But this just gives you an overview of where we're seeing the most calls for service related to camping. And as you can see, most of it is on the, that's the five district, as sort of the city is divided into six districts currently, and the bulk of these calls are in the five district, which is on the west side of town, some of which are in the three, which is a little bit east of that, but most of them are in one particular area in town.
How much of this is Ward 3A?
I'm sorry?
How much of that is Ward 3A?
I don't know exactly what Ward 3A is.
The ward I represent, I'm by Cuyahoga, Shute Park area.
Okay, so if that, if Cuyahoga is specifically what you're asking about, so about half of that is in the three districts, and so that, some of that is going to be in here for sure. I would say, you know, anecdotally, because I'm out there every single day with the teams, most of the camps we see are a bit west of there, a bit west of 10th Avenue, but there are definitely camps along the 10th Avenue corridor. But there are definitely camps along the Tenth Avenue corridor.
So it's, it remains significant over a period of years, right?
So this is just from September of twenty-three, when the camp call type started. So I, I can't really answer exactly, I think, what you're asking.
Well, I think around the time when the county put the shelter on Tenth Avenue is what I'm thinking of, around that time. If calls rose higher during that time and in that area.
Well, camp calls wouldn't have, because I believe that the Bridges Shelter came online in.
Twenty eighteen, I think, or twenty nineteen?
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my.
Twenty twenty-one?
I think it was twenty twenty or twenty-one. So this map wouldn't be representative of anything related to, you know, prior to September of twenty-three.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure if that's answering your question, but.
It's a significant number. And I'm just seeing that it's steady, significant number that is never going to be going down. It doesn't fluctuate. It just keeps going higher.
Anecdotally, so I, I've only been in this particular role for a little over two months. But as I said, I'm out there with my teams every single day and we are seeing a decrease in, in camps. There's no question. So for what it's worth.
Our camping, whatever you want to call it, our camping is having an effect then?
I'm sorry?
Our camping ban is having an effect during certain hours.
Absolutely. So as I kind of stated before, the Community Impact Team and the Bike Team, this is primarily what we focus on. Well, it's, you know, camping is part of it, but it's, it's all the livability issues related to that. And that's for time, for full-time employees to focus on this primarily on the west side of town.
Thank you.
Do you think some of the impact and the reduction had to do with the amendment to measure one-ten?
Absolutely. And I'm going to speak to that a little bit further in subsequent slides here.
And Aaron, could you remind me how the, I guess, this work schedule for the Community Impact and the Bike Teams? I'm hoping it's twenty-four seven.
We don't have the funding for that, but we can talk about that later. So the, the two teams, we have coverage Monday through Friday from seven AM to five PM. That's their normal working hours. For several months, we actually had a five-hour overtime biz on the weekends. So they were working, some of them, we had pairs of two basically, working Saturday and Sunday as well. We actually saw such a decrease in some of the challenges we were, we were seeing that we stopped doing the weekend patrols. We switched it to patrols from five PM to, or five PM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, because we were seeing things moving around a little bit, basically. We were, we were seeing camping on block sixty-seven, which we'll talk about in a little bit, between four PM and seven PM, when they're not supposed to be camping there until seven PM. So we switched it. So we were staying until seven PM, Monday through Friday. And then we saw a decrease in that. And so we stopped doing that as well. So.
And, and it may be that we get into this in a bit, Kim, but the, the four to seven, because the camping ordinance allows at seven PM on, and yet Homeless Connect closed prior to seven. And so then there's a, a period of time where they don't have access to Project Homeless Connect. And they also don't have access, you know, to the parking, I'm sorry, to the camping area in block sixty-seven.
Yes.
Okay, can, can I ask where these camps are generally located? Are they proximate to businesses? Is that the primary? I mean, when you get calls for service, is it from businesses, is it from residents? Is it, you know, what, where are the, where are these camps?
Good question. All of the above. So we, a lot of this work that, that my teams do is proactive. So we know where most of the hotspots are in terms of, of camping, both on public and private property. So we spend a lot of our time checking those places. But we also do get a lot of complaints from business owners and citizens as well. So it's, it's across the board, really. And it's not always downtown. I mean, as you can see, there, it's kind of all over the place. And just today, we spent two hours off of Bellknap Court in an industrial area, sweeping camps on private property that's going to be developed. So it's really, it's all over the place. So this is just a graphic to show calls for service at block sixty-seven. I'm going to assume everybody is very familiar with block sixty-seven and what that is. Okay, perfect. So most of these are going to be self-initiated by officers. So like I said, we, I actually start out my day at seven AM at block sixty-seven every day that I work. And my team starts there as well. And then we kind of fan out from there. So what we do is, it's, it's, you know, initially it was a lot more about education and referrals. And so we would refer people to Project Homeless Connect, which we still do all the time. Most of the, most of the folks we see there are very familiar faces. And so the education isn't as necessary all the time. But we just, we enforce the, the camping ordinances and the, the time, time and place and manner on block sixty-seven. So this is just year-to-date, twenty-two thousand twenty-four, we've responded three hundred and sixteen times to block sixty-seven. Almost all of them are going to be self-initiated. Okay. I will try to keep this as brief as possible. I'm not going to probably get too much into measure one-ten unless somebody has specific questions. Just a brief history, if you're not familiar, there was a decriminalization of possession. And I mean, it was something that, when this was being proposed in law enforcement, we were fearful for a lot of different reasons. And I know it wasn't just law enforcement. I know it was treatment providers and a lot of people were very fearful of this and what might happen. And what did happen was exactly what we feared. But, so decriminalized it was essentially well-intentioned failure on a lot of levels. This is my opinion, not the opinion of the Hillsborough Police Department. Specific impacts to Hillsborough are really hard to say what the specific impacts to Hillsborough were. There, there were significant impacts to the state of Oregon in terms of overdose deaths. There's no question. Hillsborough overdose deaths actually remain pretty constant and have remained pretty constant with the exception of two thousand twenty. With COVID, I think there was a significant drop, but the Hillsborough overdose deaths remained pretty flat and have for several years. Any particular questions about measure one-ten before I move on to the fix?
What is our overdose rate?
So overdose deaths in Hillsborough average about twenty-two per year.
Okay.
Do you have data that shows that we're seeing an increase in overdoses due to measure one-ten? Because I've seen other things that show that nationally it rose. And there's not necessarily a correlation between measure one-ten legalization, but more a correlation between increased fentanyl use nationwide.
That's an excellent question. And probably I should back up. I, I can't say that measure one-ten caused an increase in overdose deaths, but it was a pretty significant correlation. And I do have stats on that if you'd like. It's not part of my presentation, but I do have them. So you're right. I cannot say that that was a direct cause. But prior to measure one-ten, that's exactly what we feared was, would be an increase in overdose deaths. And that's exactly what occurred.
Do we have stats prior to measure one-ten being enacted as, as far as the overdose, overdose deaths per year?
In Hillsborough, I do. I don't, in front of me, have stats related to that. Well, actually, hold on.
So if we could show pre and post.
Actually, so this I just printed off from Oregon Health Authority. And let me make sure I read this before I quote it.
And it would at best be a correlation, not a causation, but still.
Absolutely. So in two thousand nineteen, in Oregon, there were two hundred and eighty unintentional opioid overdose deaths. In two thousand twenty, there were four hundred and seventy-two accidental opioid overdose deaths, that's a tongue twister, which is when measure one-ten was enacted. Two thousand twenty-one, that number rose to seven hundred and thirty-eight. Two thousand twenty-two, it rose to nine hundred and fifty-six. Two thousand twenty-three, fourteen hundred and sixteen. And in two thousand twenty-four, as of October thirty-first, it looks like there were three hundred and ninety-two, which seems to be a pretty significant decrease, but.
Yeah, and I think nationally, that's what we've seen, right? There's a decrease in opioid use and deaths.
Yeah, and I really wish I had pulled national stats to compare to Oregon in particular, but I was really trying to focus on, on local Hillsborough things. So. So I'll move on to House Bill four thousand two, which was a desperately needed fix to measure one-ten, where it actually provided some encouragement for folks to seek treatment. So if you're not familiar with the deflection program, which I assume most of you are, or at least moderately familiar, we do have an expert sitting here next to me. It provided the opportunity for law enforcement to make referrals to the deflection program in which if the subject who, who was arrested for possession can seek treatment in lieu of any sort of criminal charges whatsoever, which is perfect. Ultimately, I'm going to be careful not to give just my opinion. I'm trying to be objective here, but I'm going to, going to anyway. You know, substance abuse disorder is a public health issue, but it often takes a law enforcement input to encourage folks to seek treatment. So I think this is a perfect program in, in my experience in, you know, twenty years in law enforcement. It's brand new and it's already showing some positive effects. So I'll speak to a little bit about how my team in particular does this. We, when we encounter somebody who is possessing a small amount of controlled substances, we will, and they're deflection eligible, meaning they don't have any other criminal charges at the time we contact them. We will issue them a deflection, what's a misdemeanor citation for unlawful possession of a controlled substance. We provide them resources and information on how to sign up for the deflection program. That's what every law enforcement officer in the state does, or they should be doing anyway. My teams do go a step further and we contact four D Recovery, who is an excellent partner, directly right there on the spot, and they respond generally within minutes. They're very, very responsive. That would be practical for everybody in the Hillsborough Police Department to do. Especially because four D Recovery works kind of Monday through Friday, you know, banker's hours anyway, which is when we work. And so we refer every single person directly to four D to kind of get the ball rolling immediately. So there's a peer support program where they'll send a, a peer out to counsel them and, and provide them resources and referrals for detox and long-term treatment.
Sergeant, four D Recovery, south side of Oak, just west of First.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And they're very, very responsive. I cannot say enough good things. And I know that Kim will probably say plenty of good things. They're a fantastic partner. And I really wish they were here that I could sing their praises, but. So that's our process in terms of the Bike Team and the Community Impact Team, is we take the extra step and make the referral directly to four D immediately when we issue the citation to get that ball rolling as quickly as possible. Okay, so this is, these are just our complete, our total number of calls for service in the city of Hillsborough annually. And this is really just for reference, because some of the subsequent slides, you're going to see some trends. As you can see, generally speaking, our overall calls for service year over year is relatively flat. And that's really all I'm going to say about that. That's the only importance of this slide.
Although we can see a clear drop at the start of the pandemic.
Absolutely. So this slide represents our overdose calls in the city of Hillsborough. So you can see an upward trend overall. And, you know, keep in mind, our, our calls for service generally remain pretty flat, but we are seeing an uptick in overdose calls. These are both intentional and unintentional. It's, the way these numbers are pulled are directly from, from our dispatch. So every call for service, it's probably not easily possible to separate intentional versus unintentional, because they all come out as overdose calls.
Question.
What do you mean intent, sorry? Being intentional, you're talking about a suicide?
Yes.
Yeah, just want to make sure.
Yes.
Year-to-date, is that as of end of September or end of October?
Oh, that's a fantastic question.
I just need to know, do I multiply it by, you know, point two-five or point two?
A lot of these stats I polled over the last two weeks. I can't remember exactly which one. It was within the last couple of weeks, so.
I'm going to guess.
I can tell you. No, it would definitely would have been in October, but somewhere, I think so.
Has our policy of providing fentanyl, our Narcan reduced the number of people that are dying from, I mean, in here, I mean, ours? Can you measure that or is that?
Yeah, well, the, the way we can possibly measure that is just number of overdose deaths, which has remained pretty constant and flat over the last five years or so. So we haven't seen a significant decrease necessarily because of naloxone being available. I know we use it a lot. I've used it many times personally. But I can't say that's, overall, that's reduced the number of deaths.
I just remember us starting to equip our police force with.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I, I just remember when we started providing naloxone to our first responders. And I was wondering what kind of effect.
I mean, I could say, again, this is going to be anecdotal, but I have, I have been to many overdose calls where I have used naloxone and provided CPR and it almost certainly saved someone's life. And that's just one person and the police department has done it many, many, many times over. So it's hard to know because we, a lot of lives were saved. So it's hard to know how many wouldn't have been if we had not been provided that. It's an excellent tool. And I'm really, really glad we have it.
A question with the overdose calls, are a lot of locations to the camps? Are you seeing, is that correlated?
There's actually, one of the slides shows, it's the next slide, actually. So if you remember where we saw kind of the bulk of the camp calls on a previous map, it, it really does line up with a lot of camp calls. I don't have the exact numbers of how many of these were at camps versus not at camps, but the locations are virtually the same in terms of the frequency. Now, this is, this is an actual heat map. So there's obviously overdose calls in other parts of the city that aren't being calculated. But this is where the bulk of them are in the city of Hillsborough.
So is that, I can't see from here. So is that Shoe Park?
Shoe Park would be right over there. I, I also can't see from here, so. But that's, that's generally where, yeah, Shoe Park is going to be probably close to the bottom red square.
I can see pretty clearly from my speed though. I think Shoe Park is the, is the bottom right hand of those kind of red and orange squares. So you can see Tenth Avenue going up there. So it would be at the very bottom right. So it's actually more northwest of Shoe Park.
Thank you.
I think you can pick up TV Highway in the green section and then follow it on around where it curves up. And, you know, the, I guess it would be the vertical line, Jackson School Road, you know, in the purple part above one of those dark red blocks. So.
And I'm curious if you see, I, I noticed that this is very closely related to the hospital. It's very close to the hospital. Is there any, do you notice anything related to that or no? Is it just a happenstance?
I'm not familiar with any overdose calls at the hospital. That's a really good question, but I've never responded to the hospital for an overdose call.
Yeah, no worry. Just noticing it, seeing if you saw any patterns or anything like that?
Yeah, no worry, just noticing it, seeing if you saw any patterns or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, a lot of folks who do overdose are transported to the hospital, but the call location would be wherever they originates, exactly. And this actually illustrates our districts, if you were curious about that. So when I referred to the five district before in terms of the bulk of our camp calls, that's that lower pink section down there. And it does spill over into the three district as well.
So that cluster, if you say it's west, or you say it's west, then that's closer to the jail also?
So the, from here, it looks to me the jail would be in that cluster of of squares. Oh, thank you. So here's, here's TV Highway, Shoe Park would be right around here. What was one, the jail's over here, so it's, it's. This is really, you know, block sixty-seven, I think, was where all, I don't, right in the middle of this area. Apparently not all computers are touchscreen. Noted. There we go. Oops, too far. So these are behavior.
Wasn't there a PCOS one? I'm really intrigued by that data.
Hold on, there might be two. Okay. So this, September first is when House Bill four thousand two went into effect, and it actually recriminalized possession of small amounts of controlled substances in in relation to the deflection program. So this is a heat map related to our, the HPD's total PCS arrests. So that, the heat map is specific to both deflection and non-deflection eligible arrests. And you can see, again, there's, there's a significant, that all of, the majority of the activity is in a very similar location as some of the other slides we've seen, which is why my teams focus most of our attention on on that part of town.
I think that was one of the things I wanted to ask about specifically around this. Is it because the folks are down there that you're finding more folk? Like, basically, I know there is an amount of this that is, you know, like you said, most of your calls are self-initiated. So therefore, by being in the downtown area, it necessarily means that there will be more of these calls down there. So I think that's one of the things I'm curious about here, particularly since, you know, I can see where the location is compared to, you know, what we're all talking about, Project Homelessness, and other things like that. How much are you kind of looking at that area and finding things versus looking at different areas and finding that?
Great question, and we've talked about this quite a bit, because there's definitely a significant portion of it is simply because we're there looking, but it's not at all hard to find. It is literally walking down the sidewalk. We, we see people every single day open-air drug-using, and it's not difficult at all. And primarily, yeah, and it's kind of which which came first, right? And I, and I see your point exactly. I don't know exactly how to answer that. I mean, we definitely take a proactive approach in trying to minimize some of the impacts of behavioral health and homelessness on the downtown core. So, yeah, we do see a lot more, but like I said, it's not difficult to find. And if we weren't down there being proactive, it's entirely likely that business owners would be calling, and we would be reactive instead. And I can't say for sure if the numbers would be that much different. So.
I'm sorry, so.
Yes.
And it's around the downtown core area because of the MAC station?
I'm not saying it's because of the MAC station at all. I'm just saying this is where we're seeing the significant amount of problems with open-air drug use, so this is where we're focusing our attention. I'm not suggesting there's any particular cause that it happens to be right here. This is just where we're seeing it. So Hillsborough has issued as of, well, just a few days ago, actually. I think I pulled these on the seventeenth, a hundred and eighteen deflection citations, and has made a hundred and fifty-four non-deflection eligible PCS arrests. And that's since September first. By comparison, I think we're gonna have some Washington County numbers. I think all of Washington County has seen something like a hundred and seventy. So of the hundred and eighty-three deflection citations in all of Washington County, Hillsborough has issued a hundred and eighteen of them. And I just actually heard on OPB a couple of days ago, all of Multnomah County has issued one hundred in all of Multnomah County. So Hillsborough has more deflections referrals than all of Multnomah County. And again, this is because we focus on it. And all you have to do is walk down a number of sidewalks in town, and you're gonna see it.
I have, I have a question about the one hundred and fifty-four non-deflection eligible folks. You know, one of the things that always got me about the four thousand two is that deflections only eligible if you have a completely clean record, you have no other reason. Obviously, part of these interactions are inherently saying you're trespassing in 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 some instances, I don't wanna generalize, but there's, there's trespassing inherently adding a thing on there. How many of those one hundred and fifty-four folks have the kind of more minor livability of vandalism or a camping violation versus more potentially severe ones, say assault or theft or anything like that? Like, obviously, I know you're not gonna have the full numbers for the one fifty-four, but I am curious what level it kind of sets up an unintentional barrier right there.
That's an excellent question. We talk about this a lot, we were actually just talking about this. It is our wish that more folks were eligible for deflection. That's just not practical right now. You have to have a standalone charge of PCS. You can't have a warrant, you can't have any other charge associated with that. And sometimes we, you know, my teams will play with that a little bit. We have a trespassing and a PCS. Well, if we just kind of don't focus so much on the trespassing, maybe it's at block sixty-seven, and it's really not hurting anyone in particular, we will just issue the deflection citation to get them referred to services versus them not being deflection eligible. To answer your question, I don't have a good, I don't have a good answer on how many are more severe crimes in addition to. I can tell you a lot of these are warrant arrests, but I don't, I don't have the exact numbers on kind of the severity of additional crimes.
Are they repeated violators? I mean, are you issuing?
I can tell you anecdotally, yes, we're issuing. Well, so once you're, you're issued your deflection, you only, you basically get one chance at deflection. We've had some situations where it's been within one week, and technically, they still are deflection eligible because their initial citation hasn't even gone through the process yet. But we are seeing a lot of repeat offenders, just.
Second time, it'd be a non-deflection eligible person, if they've already been referred.
Good question, and it's a little complicated, because police officers aren't really there to determine who's deflection eligible or not, unless they have additional charges. So there, there's several folks that maybe we've issued them two or three citations. We know technically they're not deflection eligible, but we're gonna issue them a citation anyway. I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but.
A random question, if any of those are also getting picked up for parole violations?
Yes, so a lot of, a lot of the non-deflection eligible numbers you see there are gonna be warrant arrests. So that could be a, you know, they have a warrant from the parole board or something like that. And I think this is my last one. So these are just total number of behavioral health calls for service. This obviously shows the trend, and again, think back to our, our basically flat trend of calls for service, our calls for service remaining relatively flat over several years. And yet, we see this upward tick in behavioral health calls. Now, I kind of hesitated to keep this slide in, because this encompasses a lot more than just we're talking, what we're talking about tonight. Ultimately, because one of the topics is behavioral health in general, we decided to keep it in. But I would think about this slide not in terms of homelessness at all, because a lot of these, this can be somebody acting out in public. This could be somebody who's suicidal. This can be a lot of different things that all get categorized as behavioral health calls. But the bottom line is we are seeing a significant increase in behavioral health calls, especially relative to our flat number of calls for service. I think that's all I have, unless there's any particular questions. Hope I didn't bore you.
How, how long is the deflection? Like, basically, has it been long enough that we would have anyone go through the deflection program yet? I don't believe so, but I don't.
I'm not sure who's gonna talk about.
Cool, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Very good presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, it's okay. Yeah, it's early in the night, we've got lots of time. I just, I want to thank the presenters, Kyomi and Sergeant McCarver so far, and I'm sure the others would be great. I, there's, because I get to speak with the district attorney on a very regular basis and all that, there's just a few things that I wanted to elaborate on that the sergeant touched on, again, super quickly. Yeah, we, we are not saying that Measure one-ten increased overdose deaths. It was actually a confluence of things that did that. It was, very unfortunately enough, fentanyl hit the scene almost simultaneously as Measure one-ten was passed. So we had this poison introduced to the system that we had, that, you know, normally we would respond to, although, you know, we're always in a lag mode when it comes to new things that are introduced. But it was introduced at the same time enforcement was severely curtailed. Example of that before, last year, in the entirety of Washington County, forty-four possession cases were filed before the deflection program came online. So if you keep that in mind with the numbers that Sergeant McCarver's talking about today, that's a tenfold increase in the number of arrests now for possession. And the important is, we, we had literally a handful over the life of ballot Measure one-ten make it all the way through a treatment program, because as the sergeant alluded to, it's, it's not impossible, but it's rare that an event happens in a person's life or that enough pressure comes to bear that causes them to willingly go into treatment and then be successful. We feel like enforcement is, the consequence of that increases the number of people that are successful. It is kind of a negative, hoping for a positive, but the early numbers are indicative of that we will see many more people. Keep in mind, we're only three months into this. We'll see many more people make it all the way through treatment with these programs. So we believe in it. One last thing, because I promised I would be brief, that I wanted to mention is, and one of the reasons I think it's important to notice that that very red, bright red beacon downtown is our philosophy with deflection is we do, we have not increased our search for drug offenses. We are not, we're not sending out any task forces, we're not sending out any targeted enforcement. We are only making arrests in the regular course of our duties. So all those visits to all those camps that Sergeant McCarver's folks do every day, they're, they're not following any different pattern than they were before deflection was introduced. They are now just, they are now just have that tool to get, you know, people into a small percentage into this deflection program. I believe over time, because this is such a new concept, that we will make adjustments as a county and as a state, where we'll be even more effective and we'll be able to, you know, we'll learn from, from what the experience tells us, and we'll be able to perhaps, you know, get some folks that have a lower-level additional charge into the program, and they won't be automatically disqualified from it. So thank you for letting me just take a moment and add to the very excellent information that the sergeant's sharing with you.
Hi, Marty. Great, thank you. So I'll be able to be relatively quick tonight, because a lot of the information you've heard, but just wanted to give a, if I do the right direction, a really quick review of the program, who we've served, our partnerships and the outreach that we're doing within the community, because that's a really important component also of this program. So to start with, what is deflection? You've, you've heard a bit from Sergeant McCarver about deflection, but it really is a tool to divert people completely out of the criminal justice system into treatment. So it is a behavioral health program. It is, it's not intended to be a homeless services program. It's not intended to be a law enforcement program. But in, in my experience, and I'm gonna age myself, I have forty years of public health experience. This, this is a true public health program that's balancing harm reduction and treating this as the medical issue that it is with holding people accountable. And we need, we know that we need both, and so we really appreciate the partnership. One of the things that I wanted to say about deflection is it's a voluntary program. Not every county in the state has initiated a deflection program. And our local district attorney was able to set some of the criteria, and Kevin chose to do that with the steering committee, so with the behavioral health partners sitting there at the table to determine who's gonna qualify, who's gonna be eligible for deflection. And we did start out with a very narrow definition, so I just wanted to sort of correct that that's not state mandated as to who's eligible for deflection. It was, it was determined at the local level, so each county is determining. So you'll see differences in other counties. And as you've heard, we had really no data prior to two thousand and nineteen. So we had no idea how many arrests or citations to expect, and we had very limited, as you'll see in a few slides, we had very limited funding. Marion County, for example, received a lot more funding than Washington County, and proportionate to Multnomah County, who you heard has had a hundred deflection eligible, eligible participants. We've had many more than that. So, so it's also, we're constrained by the resources that we were given. So, and you've already heard about how somebody enters deflection. It really is law enforcement initiated through a citation or through an arrest. We've had questions about if there's other ways to initiate it, and we're evaluating over time how this program is working, how many referrals do we get, who's eligible, and what success is looking like. And the way that we have defined, and again, this was locally defined, and we did this in partnership with our behavioral health resource network providers, our behavioral health program within the county, and our public safety and justice partners, the DA's office, the sheriff's department. And the way that we are defining deflection success is that the person successfully engages in treatment while they're in the program, and that they demonstrate after three months that they demonstrate a likelihood to continue engagement and treatment. Because we know that people, it's, it's not a one-time you go to treatment and you're miraculously on the right path, and you never abuse substances again. We know that people will, will fall off and may have other possessions, and so we're looking at things like, if they're still in the program, that doesn't mean that they're automatically deemed unsuccessful and out of the program, because we know people might have, you know, we're not doing your analysis. It's really about, are they engaging in treatment? And that is defined by the treatment providers. And so there's a team that meets every single day, and they talk about who's in the program, where they are in the process, and are they engaging with treatment? And so we know that by connecting with the treatment providers. The other thing that I wanted to say about.
I have a quick question, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Sorry.
What are the other possible ways that you're considering, other than taken in by law enforcement? What are the other possible ways that you're considering?
So we've been asked, for example, when I've presented to health providers, we've been asked, can healthcare providers refer into the program? Can emergency departments refer into the program? Can other behavioral health providers refer into the program? And so we're taking all of that into account, but again, we have very limited resources right now. And so we really have to keep it pretty narrow for the time being, but we're trying to capture those ideas and how many more people could we help? So the, the other thing that I, I just want to say that's really important is 4001 wasn't just about deflection. And I didn't bring that slide, but I'm happy to share more information, but there are three other pathways that you can have your record expunged if you participate in treatment. So whether it's through the probation and parole and, and general supervision, somebody might go through drug court. So there are other pathways if you're not deflection eligible or if you're not successful in deflection, because the goal is to get people into treatment and to save lives. So this is, our numbers are going to differ a little bit because we didn't coordinate necessarily on the day that we polled, but as of November, uh-oh, the back of that just fell. As of November fifteenth, you can see that we've had a hundred and eighty-three standalone citations and you saw the number that Hillsborough contributed to that. We have forty-five people are eligible for deflection based on that criteria of not having another, you know, that they're not already part of the system, so they're not already in supervision or have other outstanding criminal histories. Also, out of those forty-five that are eligible, we have twenty-six people that are actually in deflection currently. Forty-five are eligible, but eight of them are pending, so they're still under review. And the way that it works from the county's perspective is, is like you were saying, the officer issues the citation, gives information about the deflection program. We have a district DA that, one of our district attorneys looks at, are they eligible? So they're able to go in and look and see, are they already, are they already under supervision? Do they have other criminal charges? And, and make a determination about whether or not they're eligible. So we have a hundred and thirty of the total that were not eligible. Ninety-three of those, it was because they had other pending criminal cases. Twenty-three were not eligible because they were currently on supervision. Fourteen were not eligible because of previous criminal histories and fifteen were due to failure to appear. So one of the things, once we get that referral and we have a name, and I said that team meets every day, somebody is told that they have seven days to either enroll in deflection or to show up to court. And so the, the, one of the strategies that we use is we have the team at court so that we can catch them and we have great relationship with the judges in the court so that we can catch them right before their appointment and give them that last opportunity to register, to sign up for deflection. So here's a little bit about the budget constraints. So initially, we were told that we would get 1.3 million dollars. We actually received 1.5 million dollars. So with the additional allocation, we were able to fund more community-based peer supports. And so that's where we're really, really pleased and appreciative of the partnership with Hillsborough because you all signed up. Yes, we will, we will participate in a pilot project where peer mentors are sent directly, you know, to the scene as soon as they're called by police. We're not able to do that across the county. So we have 4D here in Hillsborough that's contracted to provide that service and they rose their hand and right away, without us even, you know, calling on them, said, "We want to participate, we want to be a part of this solution" and had a great relationship with the police department here. And then we also have Mental Health Association of Oregon, who is partnering with the Beaverton team bike, it's also the Beaverton Bike Team. And I would say that what we're hearing from Beaverton is really similar downtown corridor-focused. That's where they're seeing the increased calls, the encampments, all, all of the things that you heard about today in a, you know, particular area in Hillsborough. So just a little bit, in addition to the district attorney that we have who's really screening for eligibility and helping the team navigate the court system and helping the, the potentially eligible participants, we have Lieutenant Nofstinger, who is with the sheriff's department. He's a part-time deflection-focused deputy and he really is focused on working with all of the other police departments throughout the county. So providing that initial training, capturing information, what's working well, what's not working well, bringing that back to the team so that we can constantly be reviewing because this is a brand-new program. Nobody's done it anywhere. There's models that we're basing it on from Seattle and Lane County, but deflection is something that's very different that nobody else has ever done. So we're all trying to figure out what is the best approach to this and how do we help the most people? In addition, we now have, and I wanted to put a picture of Danielle up here because Danielle is our senior program coordinator. And again, this is a behavioral health program, so she's housed in Health and Human Services and she is the, really the program manager for this deflection program. We also have some data support because it is a very, very data-heavy program because it's a new, new program to the state. So there's hundreds of measures that we're being asked to contribute and it's a matter of getting those from, from our police department partners as well as our healthcare provider partners and the team itself, the DA's office. So it's really pulling from many different data sources and you know probably how well health systems, behavioral health in particular, and, you know, educational systems and police departments, how well we share data because we're all trying to protect people's rights. So even within the county, this is a true partnership between, as you've heard, Health and Human Services, the DA's office, the sheriff and housing. And what you're seeing there is when we're out, when we're out on the street, what our officers have to collect and our outreach workers. So when they call the outreach workers, they're collecting information from the client. And so our information technology department was able to work with our deflection team and create this handheld data collection tool that's taking like hundreds of questions and, and boiling it down to the few that we need to get, that we collect on the streets so that we can get people through the, through the program, into the program. And then the other thing, this is a true partnership with our Behavioral Health Resource Network. You've heard about the two specific contractors that we're working with for peer outreach, but all of our behavioral health research network, our resource network, they're all a part of the program because people can go to any of the providers, including some national providers to receive their treatment. So treatment is available through our complete network. There's nineteen different providers. I will say that we are pretty confident in the ability to help people access outpatient services right now. We are extremely limited with people that need sobering services or with people that need inpatient services. And I'm, and you've all heard a lot about the Center for Addiction, Triage and Treatment, which is coming online, which will add really critical needed resources for this program because outpatient services are not enough for everybody that has a severe addiction, especially when they're in crisis or need medical management.
Can you speak to the capacity of all the programs that you just described in terms of how many people need this versus how many we can actually serve? Let's say, I mean, I know it's early because you don't know how many people are going to be referred, right? But, or eligible, I should say.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea what your budget allows you to do?
So, so the, the budget for deflection isn't the budget used for the treatment services. And I think Counselor Beach asked earlier about Medicaid and the services themselves, the treatment services are paid mostly through Medicaid, sometimes private insurance or, or Medicare for people over sixty-five or people with disabilities. We also receive some Measure 110 because there is still Measure 110 funding for treatment providers and we could have another session about the state looking at reducing those Measure 110 funds that are coming directly for treatment, which we're, we're really having a conversation because it's so critical to the success of deflection program is getting people into treatment. Right now, we feel confident that if, if somebody is willing and ready to accept outpatient treatment, that we have the capacity and the number of providers to provide that. It's inpatient treatment where we're really lacking resources. Let's see. Oops, okay. So the, the last thing I wanted to kind of end with and answer any other questions, we're really trying to get out there and learn from our community. So as we were developing the, what the deflection program would look like and who would be, who would qualify for the deflection program, we were doing a lot of community presentations. So we've met with all of these groups, we continue to meet like with you all tonight, we continue to meet with everyone that we can get out there and talk to about the deflection program because it's, it's really, it's an important partnership between the public safety, community and public health treatment providers. And so we want to help people understand because there, there is this misunderstanding that when Measure 110 was changed and the new law was passed, that we're just putting people in jail. And so it's really important that we can get out there and, and make sure that people understand the whole point of this is that they never set foot in jail and that they are directed right into treatment. That doesn't work for everybody. And so there's these other three pathways that if, if for some reason they don't want to go into deflection or they don't qualify for deflection, there are other pathways so that they can get the treatment that they need and eventually have their records expunged. And, you know, tonight, we're talking a lot about homelessness. That's something that's really critical and we worked with our housing providers because if you have a criminal history on your record, it's just ten times more difficult for us to get the housing help that people need. So with that, I think that was it for me and I'll answer any questions. And I went pretty quickly, but you've heard a lot about it already tonight.
Thanks, Marty.
Sorry. It's not staying on.
We're going to let her off this easy?
We're getting tired, yes.
Okay, any, any more questions for the sergeant?
We've worn him down.
Is it possible to get a slide deck from all of you of today's presentations you've all provided? Because it's great information and I know that it'd be easy to go back and recap on that and absorb even more information to reach out and ask more questions.
And I think you have it. The other thing I was going to say is we have done an overdose report and so I'll make sure and get that to Kiyomi and Simone so that you'll, you'll have that, that's specific to Washington County. It's, it's probably a year old because data often is, but we'll share that report as well.
I think I just want to make a comment that I appreciate the presentations. This has, just sits with me that it just feels like a circular cyclical pattern that people get caught up in and may be able to get out and go to the flexion, but maybe they can't because they've got something on their record. How do you break that kind of cycle?
So I, I think that the one is we're, we're trying to offer the program to as many people as we can with the resources we have. And so right now, that's why we started with a pretty narrow eligibility criteria. So we're looking at the criteria and things like, the things that were brought up today like trespass, those are the kind of things that we're looking at. Maybe we don't need to have that be an exclusionary criteria. The other thing is it's important to remember, this is one of three pathways that someone can get into treatment and out of the criminal justice system. And I'll send that as well so that there's clarity about the other pathways through supervision, through specialty courts. And so there, there's three other pathways for folks if they're not eligible. So deflection isn't meant and it's not going to solve the addiction program by itself. It's one sliver of a program, you know, in partnership with our homeless services program, in partnership with our normal treatment, the Hawthorne Walk-In Center, the CAT that's going to come online soon, you know, our full behavioral health services. So it's a huge, it's, I think, you know, we mentioned it tonight, we're not going to serve, we're not going to solve homelessness or addiction tonight, but it's important to remember, deflection is one, one pathway, just one pathway. But thank you for the question.
Thank you. I think of people, if we're looking around the jail, I think of people who might be coming out and yeah, they have committed a crime, but they're so vulnerable to what may not be available to them. And how do you make choices from there to get onto a different path? And I would say that the path shouldn't have to be multiple arrests, put in jail, released, and get arrested again and go through that cycle. I, I just think that clearly people are not able to make choices that we would like them to make, but I would like to figure out how do we be more compassionate? We know, we can see the cycle, but what do we do about it? They can't do anything about it, but we have to do something about it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the questions. Thank you. Well, Kim, you want to bring us home? That's not a good choice.
In any other venue, I might ask us to do a sixty-second dance break, but I'll let you guys not. Okay, my name is Kim Marshall. I'm the executive director of Project Homeless Connect. It's an honor to be here with you. I look forward to your questions. I'll get through my slides as quickly as possible. For me, that's probably not quick, but, and Counselor President Martin, you have excellent, excellent questions tonight and I look forward to hearing more from you. I am going to breeze through the first couple. We will get you the slide deck so you have them. Brief information about Project Homeless Connect. Our mission is to empower individuals experiencing houselessness by meeting them where they are and walking with them on their unique journeys towards stability and self-reliance. You can see our vision and our core values, our approach, which is going to speak into all the different programs we have. It's about building trusting relationships and that's going to be a thread that I'm going to speak into. We have our one-day resource events or one-day events that we do, a street outreach team and- an access center, peer mentors, shelter services, and housing resources with case management. We utilize a trauma-informed approach with a DEI lens in everything we do. I can say that I have a staff that 76% of my staff have lived experience. So their stories and testimonies are beautiful to the work we do. Our access center downtown Hillsborough, we serve a diverse group of individuals experiencing homelessness, providing a safe place and that's different for everyone. Our goal is to make sure that they have access to showers, laundry, warm meals, and then resourcing with staff for next steps, again, along their unique journeys. Quick snapshot here and you all have a impact report from last year from us. So you can see the work that was done. Read that, you know, when you get home tonight, all the extra time. But we did, we did serve 2,439 unique individuals at our cute little yellow house. I'm realizing I probably should have used a picture of the new access center because that would have been really awesome, but here we are. Lots of showers, lots of laundry. Wanted to speak in a little bit, why access centers? Why are they important? Why is the county, you know, moving forward with funding to make sure that we have this critical resource? It is because it is a critical first step for so many of our homeless friends, just to have a safe place to come, to be able to take a hot breath sometimes, just breathe, be in community, know that people care. It's a pathway to stability. With all the wonderful programs that the supportive housing services funding has been able to provide, it allows us to have those conversations around next steps for our friends. Hygiene and health is really important. The ability to take a shower, the ability to use a restroom, basic, basic needs, being fed, staying warm. And then it's a supportive community. One of our goals, I said at the beginning, is about building trusting relationships. We want to build relationships with our homeless friends to understand what their barriers are, what their needs are, and how best we can serve them. We want to acknowledge that sometimes the behaviors that are visible and experienced in our neighboring communities are frustrating. I mean, I think that's the right word. Many behaviors from individuals experiencing homelessness are influenced by trauma, mental health, and substance use. That's a theme that you've heard tonight across this panel is substance use and mental health. Both the house's population and the surrounding community benefit when open lines of communication are established. And so this is why we are so honored to be a part of this panel and get to work with the lovely people here and the cities in this county and then the broader community. It does take a village and at the end of the day, homelessness intersects with everything. Supportive, comprehensive approaches that include housing, healthcare, and employment opportunities are key to resolving some of the visible behaviors in the community. And they are. It's also difficult to have some of those conversations when you're working with someone who is deep in their addiction or having a mental health crisis. Oh, sorry, it's going to go, just kidding. Okay. So our response at Project Homeless Connect, we are readily available by phone and email for anyone that wants to communicate with us. We will happily respond. We try to respond normally within one to two hours or first thing the next morning, depending on when a question, comment, or scenario is brought to our attention, particularly the neighbors that are closest to us. We want to make sure that we're in constant communication with them about some of the nuisances that they're experiencing. We want to do our best to respond in a thoughtful way and we'll talk about what we're doing. Our outreach staff are messaging to those on Sixth Street. You saw the picture of our cute yellow house. Some of you have been there. It's a very tiny home, which again speaks to the need of our new access center build to be able to serve the number of people that we're seeing on a regular basis. So we have an outreach team that goes out on Sixth and really messages just to folks about deflection, our laws, and what services are available. We sent out a postcard with our commitments around this issue to our closest neighbors just to let them know that we are here and we are committed, not just to the homeless community, but the community at large here in Hillsborough. And we want to be supportive and we want to be a listening ear and we want to be understanding. And then an increased cleanup and walkarounds. So staff put on yellow vests, go around with a broom and dustpan and do some cleanups. First thing in the morning, they make sure to do cleanups, particularly at those neighbors that are relatively close to us to make sure that there isn't any trash or feces on their front doorsteps. No one should have to experience that. Not even following my own notes. We do have our new access center that is going to be coming online here in the next 12 to 18 months and we so look forward to it. We have such hope and we believe that this is going to really not only impact our homeless friends in a positive way, give them a safe space with adequate restrooms and showers, safe place to rest, have a living room where they can hang out. It will also be used for inclement weather sheltering in those moments where our weather's turning the way it is right now. And we believe with that space, we'll be able to get folks off of the street, bring them in, utilize the indoor space, the outdoor space, and kind of reduce that visualization of homelessness. We know sometimes that that in itself can cause frustration in our broader community. And then additional education about the vast issue, root causes and associated behaviors, which is what we're talking, you know, here tonight. This behavior health threat is just really key. I spoke with you guys earlier about it. Our challenges that we're seeing, and I'm going to get to this slide, is around substance use and mental health. And if we don't have those services embedded into all of the programs we are so privileged to do, we're going to continue to see that cycle that you talked about, Counselor. What are our challenges? So exactly what we're talking about, lack of services to address the uptick in drug use and mental health. This is a huge gap in our county and we are very excited for things coming forward like the CAT, Center for Addiction, Treatment, and Trauma. We will be based out of there with our housing liaisons. We currently have a housing liaison at the Hawthorne Walk-In Center and then we'll increase to three and be right in the center of CAT, providing great resources there. We still look forward to that. But right now, today, there's inadequate resources to those experiencing this. There's not the appropriate funding around this. So for Project Homeless Connect, one thing we could do is begin a peer mentor program, peer support program. Again, our, we have a large number of staff that have that lived experience and can really speak into it and be peers. And so we've increased that program to make sure that we can support folks in shelter, in housing, and out of our access center in a real tangible way. Lack of detox beds and exit plans. So right now, when we have someone come to us and say they are ready to make that change, they are ready to detox, we have to take them to downtown Portland. And we know that when we do that, they're going to leave without an exit plan. And that's incredibly frustrating. So that means they're going to go back on the street to the community they know, which is going to be a community that uses structuring. It's, it's real, right? And it's across the board. We know it at BHC tonight. Oh, I'm a crier, by the way, so just go with it. We see it consistently when we're dealing with overdoses and death by overdose. For us, this is real and hard. These are people that we know. We know their stories. We make the phone call to their family. And, and then it goes beyond. Again, the privileged work we get to do. I think our community at large is also feeling it, right? They want to have compassion. Their desire and innate intent is to have that compassion. And then there's frustration about vandalism and trash and, 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 again, feces. And we fully understand that. We agree. We, we also don't want the local businesses in our community at large to live in fear or to have things broken, air conditioners broken into because someone needs a coil. But again, the root of that is going to be about addiction and that's what we really want to focus on, is how do we make sure that we have those appropriate services so that we can work towards that root cause, which will then alleviate some of the behaviors.
Can I ask a question real quick? Thank you. You and your staff are dealing in an environment that's trauma. So how do you counter and what do you do for self-care so that you can continue to go back and do your job?
Stay with counsel till 11 o'clock at night. You know, it's, it's a great question and we think about it pretty consistently and we're actually, your timing is perfect. So our access center staff are spending Friday talking about this exact piece because being in a trauma environment, chaotic environment, environment on the floor, as we would call it, for eight hours is not a reasonable request. No one can do that without getting burnt out and feeling the effects. And then on days where we do have an overdose or an uptick of mental health chaos, our staff need those breaks. So we are very cognizant of it and we're asking our staff to help build shifts that give them those breaks. And then we have some other ideas as well that we're leaning into partnering with the county on some things and, and just looking at the overall service model. So the answer is yes, always to front of mind because we can't, if we don't take care of our staff, they can't take care of our homeless friends, right? And then let's talk about those key partnerships, which is really what makes this work. And we are so thankful for our partnership with the Hillsborough Police Department, particularly the CIT team. You know, we, we've been a part of this since the beginning with Rich Matriciano and we are just so thankful that we have officers who do their jobs so well with a compassionate, empathetic lens. And it's just a great relationship. We utilize each other, you know, they'll call us and be like, hey, we haven't seen so-and-so in a couple of days. Have you guys or vice versa? And try to, again, they build relationships with our homeless friends. They know them by name. They know their stories. And so we work together in partnership to help inform, engage, and work with our friends on next steps. One of the things, I put it up here, that has happened over time with particularly the CIT team is diffusing myths around police. And it wasn't just with our homeless friends that started to realize, oh, they're not all bad. Because that was kind of, I mean, a lot of engagement, right? Criminal activity, a lot of engagement with police was negative, but also my staff. My staff have had a shift in their biases as well around, around police and engagement with police. And so there's a beauty to that, which I really appreciate. Of course, of course, our county partners, SHS has been life-changing, literally life-changing for our homeless friends and we're so thankful for this voter-approved funding. Cities like yourselves, our agency partners, we've talked about 4D tonight, they are a fantastic partner in this work, incredibly passionate about the, the folks we get to serve. And our outreach team is in engagement with them almost every single day. And then the community at large, again, it takes a village, takes everybody to really lean into the hard so that we can come up with the solutions that are actually going to make real change. And, you know, Simone, we're, we're not going to figure everything out tonight, but I do think if we continue to work together, we can continue to move forward and, and find those areas where we can make change. I want to say thank you to the city of Hillsborough. We were one of the recipients of the social services grant funding that was approved tonight for the finance committee, so thank you very much for that. Thank you, Counsel, for your time. I said to Megan before we started, I don't think people realize sometimes the time commitment that you all make as it's 11 o'clock in the evening. And I want to thank this panel. It's been a wonderful collaboration to get to work together and learn from each other and have sometimes hard conversations, all with the same goal, which I really appreciate. And then Counsel, thank you for listening. That's what I, I'm open for questions.
I'm curious about staff turnover and pay. I know one of the things is this is one of the sectors that has pretty much the lowest pay, especially compared to education level outside of, say, teachers. So, one, we heard a presentation earlier, SHS in part requires a base level of pay that is somewhat livable. Is that something that your staff are able to benefit from? How do you see in terms of turnover? Are you seeing that compassion fatigue result in more turnover? Like, I'm just curious about that side of this equation.
Absolutely. That's a great, it's a great question. Is there turnover? Yes, there's turnover. And part of it, though, is because some of our positions require that live, live experience and, and some folks who have that lived experience are going to get triggered differently coming into this work. And so we've seen people need to leave because of that. Pay is still not great. We're working towards better pay. We want to continue to work towards better pay. And SHS has helped us in some, some capacity to get us there, but it is a constant. Right now, the SHS funding does not provide programmatic funding to access centers. So, once our new access center is built and we have that programmatic funding, please oh please, you know, I do believe that pay will be a piece of that. And then I think that we are just really cognizant of our staff. Our relationship building doesn't just, isn't with just our homeless friends, but it's with our staff and then all of our partners. And so we have a pretty good sense of where staff are at. Again, there are moments, we had it recently, where there was an overdose, you know, it, it causes a reaction. You know, we have friends that have built up their, I was going to say immunity, but that's not the right word, tolerance, exactly. You know, so they're administering six Narcan to bring them back. And when someone comes out of that after they administer Narcan, they're usually not pretty. It's not a, it's not a, oh, you saved me moment. Thank you. And that can be really rough on staff. So sometimes we'll have to say, you know, we're going to go ahead and close for 30 minutes, take a, take a breath, let staff calm themselves, ground themselves, and then get back to work. So we're always thinking about it and working with our staff to make sure that they are doing the self-care that they need and then figuring out how we can build shifts that are going to feed into that.
And this is totally my ignorance about Narcan. I did not know you had to sometimes administer multiple doses. Was six just a general or was that like a real-life story? I just, I just want to.
That's a real-life story.
Thank you for that.
Yep, yep. Yeah. Yes, yeah. And, you know, and so that goes back to Counselor Pace's question earlier around suicide versus accidental. And sometimes we don't know. You know, we don't know because sometimes when they, they come out of it, they're pissed that you saved them and you're like, we just saved you. And so we don't always know what the intention was. But again, when you're deep in your, your addiction, your intention might not be to kill yourself unknowingly, so.
So incredibly supportive of your work and grateful for all that you do. And I can't imagine how hard it is. I'm going to ask a question that we get from our business community, the people that are proximate to your new center. And it sounds like you are addressing some of the issues that they've raised in terms of what you intend to do to mitigate the maybe negative effects of the intake facility. And I understand you have a dialogue going with them. Is that correct? So how, how do you feel that's going? Do you feel like you're laying their concerns or is it something that is just so hard for them to? I mean, I, I would understand, from what they've said, they're feeling negative effects currently. And they're afraid that's going to maybe even increase with a bigger intake center that serves more people. And my, I guess my hope is that we can come to some sort of agreement or program or mitigation effort that, you know, that answers their concerns. I, I'm sorry to bring that up, but.
No, it's valid, right? And, and I got to chat with Counselor, wow, Counselor Pace, I just, at League of Oregon Cities a little bit. And Counselor Pace is a strong intention of supporting those businesses and making sure that they're heard and, and that their frustrations are valid, which they are. I think we, one of the things that I was able to, to share is that we have to recognize that some of those businesses are actually paying into SHS. And so they are actually a funder in, in, in some scenarios. And again, at the end of the day, Project Homeless Connect, and I'm going to speak for our partner agencies as well, we fully recognize that the frustrations are frustrating and they are a nuisance and they should not be happening. And we're working towards how do we stop those behaviors back to mental health and addiction services, right? If we can get to this root cause and have the appropriate services in place, we're going to see the behaviors go down, which have the negative effect on our nearby businesses or community at large sometimes.
Was there, was there a better place to cite this? I'm just, were there places considered?
You know, if, if, it's interesting because I don't know why I'm going to cry. Never would I have ever thought, when we purchased the yellow house, that we would be here. That was, that we didn't go into it going, we're trying to serve as many people as possible. And so when we had an uptick in serving 120, 180. And so when we had an uptick in serving 120, 130 homeless friends a day, it was a little surprising to us as well. And there's multitudes of reasons for that and I could speculate, Mayor. And so that wasn't our intention. Our intention wasn't to come into an area and make it worse. Our intention was to serve our friends, be part of a community that is engaged in this conversation and do better within that community. And we fully understand that there has been negative effects. And we want to be cognizant of those and, and be available and support in the ways that we can to help reduce some of those. At the same time, we're going to continue to do this really hard work and try to implement programs and strategies. Our new access center, looking at, at the behavioral health side of it, to, to minimize, to minimize it the best, the best we can. Yeah, but we, we, we are not, it is not a, it's not a lack of understanding where the frustration comes from.
I have a question. When you went to go buy the yellow house, were you also looking at other houses around the city?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we, we looked all over, yeah. No, there was a lot of places, but again, we, we, we were serving 40 people. You know, I mean, our numbers, when we were down the street at the other yellow house on Sixth Avenue, were much lower. And so we couldn't have dreamt that we would have ended up, you know, where we are today. S H S came into play and, you know, COVID started to trickle down. And so I think it was a multitude of things coming together that it, it just, it just kind of happened.
But did you, was there like, I mean, there was stuff that came up around the neighborhood that people weren't happy about it, but did you, I'm not saying that you went into this blindly or anything like that, but knowing what sort of pushback you were going to get from the community. And I don't think it's fair. I don't. I think, you know, we have homeless people. And for whatever reason, they're concentrated around certain areas of our city, around the services of where, that where they're at, where they're located. So they're not all over the city. They're in certain areas and it's small and there's not enough space. The house that you have on Sixth, it, it looks really small. It doesn't have enough space. That's why you've got people spilling outside. So I think the one thing I'm hearing from you tonight is that you need funding support. I guess all of you.
Yes, right.
Can say that.
Yeah, and I think that, and, and we've, Sergeant McCarver and I have talked about this a little bit. I would love some more stats on where calls were pre-P H C moving in. Just, just for information, because we know that there were homeless friends in the downtown corridor, corridor before we were there. Not saying that there hasn't been an uptick because of us, but we do know, because we engaged with them. We outreach with them during the COVID time when we were doing tent camps and congregant shelters and non-congregant shelters and all the things partnering with the county. We, we found friends, you know, in downtown Hillsborough. Do I have those numbers? I do not.
And I want to say one more thing, and this is not about you, but we, we make decisions here and try to do the best of what we think is well intentioned to meet the needs of that population. But I feel like, I feel like I'm looking at you and you're the bucket. Like you, what you do in your job is the bucket. And as long as we don't have to look at the bucket too close, we're not going to be too concerned about it. But I don't think that that should be a comfortable place for us to be as a city. And I, I, I just feel like, you know, I, I'm, I'm looking at you and how are you going to come up with all the solutions of try to do things differently of your staff in a time when it's really challenging to try to figure out how to do that and take care of yourself at the same time and try to meet community need. We have, as a council, heard a lot of people come in and talk to us about homeless problem. And we've seen it, I've seen it around 10th and I've been to meetings about it. But we, the way we respond to some of those businesses are not the same. Sometimes people get told nothing. They come and complain, they get told nothing. And sometimes the rare times that a business owner will come up and say something and we're going to do something, we're going to connect them, we're going to make sure that they have some next steps. So that's on us. We could be better towards the businesses who are facing these issues, especially when they're taking their time to come and talk to us at public comment time. So that, that's what we need to be better at. But I, I just want to, you know, what can we do to help break that cycle? And I know that it needs money. And so.
Thank you, Counselor Alclair. It was said earlier, and so I'm going to repeat it, we have a gem of a human in Kiomi here at the city. And I, and I do know that she is responding to those businesses as best she can with compassion and timeliness. Because we do want to hear their concerns and, and we want to respond how we can to be a supportive community member, right? We want to be a good neighbor, to use that term, and that is our intention. And then it's a incredibly vast and robust issue. I mean, I will sit in W E A transportation forums and wonder, why am I sitting here? And then all of a sudden it'll click, oh, because homelessness intersects with everything. It literally touches everything. And so the vastness of it can be so scary at times. But for us, it's about the relationships with the people that we get to serve and hear their stories and their, their heartbreak of trauma. Kiomi did a stat earlier of 17.3% of, was it 12 and over? That's, that, that's a, that's a scary stat, substance abuse, 12 and over. So back to earlier, your conversation around the cycle, right? There is, there is a cycle. So.
I, I, I want to share a little bit of input of what I've observed in doing my ride along with Sergeant Wade last year. First of all, you all are jewels of people. This is such a comprehensive panel to see the segment of partnership and how, how it's all intertwined and creating solutions and trust within the community to, to build positive outcomes. That, that's the effort, that's the goal. What I want to say to you with Project Homeless Connect is, don't beat yourself up. It is amazing, there, there's no barriers there, very few. And there's definitely connection there. And what I definitely appreciated that I saw, we, when going throughout the city, your location is where HPD had a, there was a welcoming aspect and that there was a name unnamed basis. I found that everywhere, but in certain groups, there was more of a wall built up with the community rather than a Project Homeless Connect. And to see that trust that was built in the outdoor space, because sometimes everyone just needs a place to hang their hat, you know, and to not feel like they have to go through additional barriers before they can get through the first step. So thank you for the work that you do. It's, it's noted and it's obviously a need that's there prior to you coming. And it's just about, we're in transition and we're creating solutions. So thank you for the work you all do, but thank you, it's an observation.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Which makes it all more important to lean into the metro conversation, not to go negative. But we all need to be cognizant of what's being talked about, the effects of the numbers that are being presented and what it could do to our system. We have spent the last three and a half years, we're in four year, year four, building up this system, which was a brand new system here in Washington County. Before S H S funding, $5 million was the only resource coming into this issue. So we really had the privilege of building a system from the ground up, which is different than our other counties. And we've built a great system, we're still tweaking it. And that's part of our anxiety around it being shifted is because we're still figuring out how to best serve people with this awesome funding source. And, and we need to be standing up and, and, and taking, taking a stand around how we protect this funding so that we aren't making reductions. And, and at the end of the day, looking at my staff, which I had to do and say, our shelter contract is not going to be renewed next year, which is going to be a cut of staffing. Those are very difficult conversations, let alone what it's going to do to our homeless friends.
So we'll go, Counselor Rilato, Counselor President Martin, I'll bring it home.
Mine's just more of a comment. So I'm, I'm probably going to send specific questions to you guys. I won't ask now, because it's going to be coming from my perspective. I'm a school administrator at a high school. So I'm imagining children right now who, we struggle to find resources age and culturally appropriate for them as well as for their parents and parental rights and all that. So I'm like, one's, you know, one step. So, and I've got some Narcan in my office, you know, that's part of my job. Because of the uptick and we have almost full-time substance abuse specialists. And so to be watching and learning and seeing that, and this is a community with resources, you know. So I really appreciate seeing this partnership. And like I said, probably early next week, once I get my brain back, for being all mushy this, this week. Just to kind of ask some follow-up questions, because our schools even, we're in year one of a new, like a C T E pathway, you know, career themed type of pathways of courses and stuff. And bless my principal, who worked really hard with one of our other vice principals for behavioral health, since it's such a huge demand right now. And so we're seeking funding as well to continue and grow that program because of the need and the exhaustion from the present lack of professionals. Because they can give us all the money that they want, but there's not enough people in the pipeline in that profession to help meet the need. So thank you, and my questions will come next week.
Am I allowed to, yeah, I'm allowed. This goes back to Counselor Alclair's comment earlier about Homeplate. Homeplate is our only youth serving agency in this county. And so we need to be supporting them in really tangible ways because we need to catch kids.
And I've only seen that, you know, I have this many students, I have this many that right now are spiraling that I, we have almost no control of what's happening because of the child's age and confidentiality and all these other things. And I've only seen response or impact on my students when it gets to the juvenile system, if that, you know. Unfortunately, unfortunately. And so it's been, it's been a struggle to try to figure that out for the kiddos. But it's good to hear the efforts as they get older in past 18. And so, yeah, I have questions.
Yeah.
So I'm giving the plug because Homeplate is going to have a gala in April. And you're all invited to come and support.
I have a question. You know, we've talked about this entire issue. One of the things we have touched on, but not, you know, focused on is the idea of part of this is spurred on by complaints by business owners and homeowners that live in this area. Are we as a city considering any additional ways to kind of convene folks to both hear those issues? Is there consideration of things like a good neighbor agreement or anything like that? Like what, what, what type of things are we going through? Not just to put it like, to basically say, yes, what Project Homeless Connect is doing to educate neighbors is great. And how else are we as a city participating in more the information side and not necessarily as much on the enforcement side? So, so like, the, obviously HPD, this is critical, but my question is more about the non-H P D resources that the city is putting towards this type of issue.
Kiomi, can I answer first and then you take it and Simone? We did do a community listening session a few years ago when we first bought the houses with some community partners to just do that, do community, do good neighbor center, good neighbor center.
Agreement.
Right, a good neighbor agreement with them and just speaking to, again, our commitments and what we're willing to commit to as being a good neighbor. And then as our new access center will come, start being built, partnering with the county to do community outreach and have those types of listening sessions will happen as well, probably in the spring.
For the city, as of the past couple of months since I've been here, it's just been super open communication lines with business owners and people downtown. I've visited businesses, I've met with people, just so they're super comfortable. People can text me, call me on the weekend, even if they have concerns. But it's for me, been really about making myself super, super available and trying to change that relationship so they see us as somebody they can call when they need support, rather than somebody they call when they have, you know, intense feelings about something.
Oh, it's amazing, thank you. Just really quickly to add as well, in addition to Kiomi's great work, we also have Carl Antonini in our, in our economic development division, who also works a lot with our downtown businesses. So we do hear these, we, we have other, to address your, your question specifically, besides P D, we have Kiomi and some of these other staff in other departments whose, whose function is really to work with those businesses.
Just a follow-up, Kiomi, so to hear, does your outreach include 10th Avenue businesses, Latino businesses?
So I don't do specific like community engagement, because we do have somebody in that specific role. But I'm more like, I work with a lot of individuals at Shoe Park and the people that staff at Shoe Park, you know, community members that they're in touch with, they'll connect me with them. And so really anybody, anywhere all over the community can contact me for anything. I get a lot of phone calls through our website, I will say. Probably a majority of the people that contact me, it is through the website. So shout out to our communications team and shout out to Megan because she helped me create this entire presentation and also has created our community services website through, through the city so that we have an easier way to access things that are just cohesive.
But people who speak other languages, they're able to contact you and connect with you and talk about what's going on with their businesses?
Yes, we actually do. The communications team shared with us a translation, I don't know the, the correct name for it, but it's a translation service essentially. So I have been able to use that service to communicate with people on the phone, which has been extremely cool because I would hate for somebody to not be able to receive services because like a language barrier.
Thank you.
So thank you all. I made a little side comment to Simone, just your preparation is obvious. And so thank you for that. I think it's, it's late, but it has been very productive. And, and I'm so grateful for your time, recognizing some of you have drive homes outside of our city. Some of you have 7:00 AM reports to duty. And so I appreciate that. And I won't repeat any of the things that have already been said, except to emphasize where our community is expecting more and more, you know, and I say from us, and it's really from you, than to see us have fewer and fewer resources, to see budget cuts. We cannot do more with less, okay? And so that is both S H S and, you know, it's one thing to give a haircut, it's another thing to cut off the head. They both accomplish the same thing, but one is, you know, but, but the, the impacts are, are different. And so I worry about what is being sold as a haircut is really just lopping off a head, you know, with what Metro's plan is doing. And so we will stand with you. I will. And, you know, in order to protect the work that you're doing and the resources that you have. And I would, you know, again, thanks Nicole for sticking with us the whole time as well. And we will fight just as hard to make sure that we receive county funds as we will to fight to prevent losing metro funds. So you can make that easier by just committing, you know, to Kim tonight that you won't cut anything. But otherwise, we will. So with that, lighthearted but serious commitment on our part. And so Chief, thank you, you know, for your being available and, and coming up and sharing information. And we ask you to stay in touch with us, please. Thanks.
Mayor, just one, if you wanted to take it to the final slide so that this is available on video. So for those who are viewing this video afterwards or who are online, this is Kiomi's email address, so you're welcome to contractor there. And also, of course, our website is our 24/7 customer service line. Thanks.